ACMB checking account so that we can continue to pay our administrative expenses through, through next month when we send out the next round of bills.
Okay.
Invoices for our stormwater fees. That's the update financially, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Deborah, update on payments and so forth.
Yes, we still have several outstanding liens for 2024. We haven't really had any activity on that in the last few months. We've had a couple of sales, retail settlement, real estate settlements that are getting those paid. We are working on the new bills to go out for the half-year cycle, which I think is a little bit further down, but right now we don't have any payments coming in. The new bills will go out on July 1st.
Okay, so how many liens did we finally?
I think we're down to like 32 that haven't been paid.
And that's pretty typical for this time of year.
I would say.
Yeah.
That's pretty average.
Okay, okay. Questions on that line item?
We only have one person in the borough that has never paid their stormwater bill on their sixth year or fifth year now.
Well, they're, they're in for a surprise whenever they sell their house. Any questions? Not hearing any. We talked about liens.
I'll just add to that very briefly. We haven't dealt with this a whole lot, I think maybe twice, but next month at Sheriff's Sales, there are two, two properties in the borough coming up, both of whom.
Wow.
Well, there may be more than two. I don't want to say there's just two, but there are two properties coming up for Sheriff's Sale in the borough that have stormwater liens against them. And we got the letters, either, either our office got them or they come to the authority directly. I've seen it both ways. And what we do is we write to the sheriff and write to the foreclosing bank and say, you know, you're correct to identify that we're owed money, here's how much we're owed, pay it out of the sale. So I don't know that the sales will happen. It's very common for those to be continued. People will, you know, sometimes come up with money and buy themselves a little bit more time or declare bankruptcy, but to the extent that the Sheriff's Sales go through, it'll take a couple of weeks, but the check will come.
Okay, good.
All reasons why we file liens.
That's right. Good. Questions? Robbie, phase B to B.
Yes, I'll start it out, but then I'm going to turn it over to Chad because he has more detail than I do, but as you know, the first contract was the water and stormwater, that's done. The second contract was Kinsey with the red sidewalks and, and the bike path, walk path. They're pretty much done with the, with that phase, that contract, except for one issue with the handicap ramp going across Racehorse Alley. We're having trouble with, with Bright Speed and other utilities that need to transfer from the old pole over to the new. Med Ed has done their work and is out of there, but now we're pulling teeth to get the rest of the utilities to move. So that pole is not pulled out to finish that, that section of concrete yet. Kinsey also did get awarded the third contract and they started the north side of the railroad tracks on the third contract for sidewalks.
In front of the train station.
So they're work in front of this train station and the driveway into the train station, all the way down to Constitution Avenue. They're, they're currently working on that portion as we speak. Anything else?
So the, the second phase that's the CDBG is, we're planning on having that phase completely done by the end of this month. And then we'll close out the CDBG grant, or grant monies, and then we'll go on to the C2P2 is the DCNR money for, and there's an acronym salad here.
I don't know how you can keep them all straight.
But it's the C2P2 is the third phase here, and like Robbie said, we did get that one started. That's going to go into July. Paving is all going to be done before college gets back. So the project is still on track to be 100% complete before college starts back up in August, so hopefully a little bit sooner than that, but we'll see how things go over the next couple of weeks here. Of course, we're going to have to avoid the July 4th weekend, but what that means to the Stormwater Authority, most of the stormwater, like Robbie said, was done with the first phase. So it's just a little bit of tie-ins, some tie-in things, adjustment of the, of the C-top inlets is a stormwater type of a component that as they pour the new curbs, they'll tie in those inlet tops. The trees, with the tree boxes, there's, there's a total of five boxes, they're still waiting on parts for the one, so we don't have that one yet, but we have four of the five installed. Now, there is going to be potentially some delay with the trees because we're getting into.
They'll go in in the fall, right?
Yeah, at this point, at this point, it's hard to, to install a tree in the middle of summer. You got, you gotta put the, the gators and water them all the time and they still, it's hard to keep them alive. So it's probably better to just wait till end of August at this point, and Kinsey said they're fine with just coming back and popping some trees in for us, so. So really, the project's, I think, starting to, to pull together. If you, if you've driven by, you'll start to see it's starting to, there really hasn't been any major changes, you know, of course, I was asked last month if I anticipated any, you know, big changes moving forward because there was a lot of change orders that we talked about last month.
Right.
And I said, you know, knock on wood, I don't think so, and so far that's been right. There hasn't been any major changes from what we talked about, whatever, not last month, two months ago.
Nothing that's going to cost the Stormwater.
Nothing that's going to cost the Stormwater Authority any more money at this point.
Good. Questions? John?
Would it help if our attorney sent a letter to Med Ed telling them to get Bright Speed out of our way due to the fact of grant money? Or tell them that we're going to bill them?
It, it, it could be, but it, like I said, Med Ed did the spans number, but now it's, it's on Bright Speed's pocket, so, and I don't know if Med Ed will bill them for not moving.
Well, Med Ed's responsible, they own the pole.
Right.
So let me throw this out, John. So another idea that, that Robbie and I were talking about last week that we could potentially do here is, is we can move forward with putting the concrete in around the old pole, and then whenever they have to yank it, they'll have to redo the curb ramp. That'll, that'll be their expense to jackhammer the concrete out and redo it.
And that'll be another six months.
That's the, that's the catch there.
Yeah.
We'll make things harder on them, but maybe also on us as well.
I mean, I had these fights all the time.
I know you did. I think, I think you hit the nail on the head, let's just cut the pole down and they'll have to come fix it.
Well, there is another option.
Yeah.
Depends how fast you want to move. The other options is show up with the chainsaw on your bucket truck, cut the pole off underneath the wires, leave that part of the pole when the wires hang.
That's, yeah, that's what.
Tell Med Ed and tell them to jerk the pole.
And that's what I was referring to just a minute ago. Yeah, we went down there and we cut the pole down and roped, roped the wires to the new pole and they're going to have to come fix it.
It's been done before in this town.
Yeah. I, I know, I know you threatened a couple of times to do that.
It creates a shitstorm, but.
Yeah. I mean, I just. Because one, one, you know, Comcast contractor showed up and we were out there in a construction meeting when they showed up and they were, they did one thing across the street, but over there where that pole lasted, come out for the sidewalk, they were up there doing some work and then they come down and Jacob and myself went up and talked to him, and I think you even went on, and he said, well, we can't, we can't move because Med Ed still has wires there. And you clearly look up there, there's no more wires up, up there because Med Ed moved all of them.
Well, Bright Speed's selling all this internet service in town and, and they're attaching wires.
Right.
To the new fiber and running new wires to houses, and they're doing it right beside poles that should have been pulled over two years ago.
Right.
And I mean, when I was on council, this was a sore subject, still a sore subject to me, been a sore subject for over 30 years with me. And I mean, there's got to be a way to make them move.
Right.
I don't know if, if Adam should send a letter or if Harry should send a letter from the borough's side of it, but I think you send them a letter, give them 30 days to correct the situation or hold them responsible for every penny it costs the borough because it's holding up our grant money.
Correct.
I vote for Harry.
I agree.
And want, just to add to what John's saying there, so, so we started this conversation with them over a year ago.
Right.
Like this isn't something.
Doesn't matter.
And at this point, they've already delayed our contractors, so I don't even know if we have like another 30 days, like, like Kinsey's going to be done with that CDBG contract by the end of this month and we want to close it out, so waiting past for another 30 days isn't even really an option. Like they need to do it next week or they're going to be jackhammering concrete out. That's, that's, that's one of the two options.
Yeah, and that'll look like crap and it'll take another six months. It'll lay there with stone just like a dozen other holes in Gettysburg that they did pull poles out of and they haven't gone back and done that concrete work yet.
Mm-hmm. True.
I know when, when you were on council, you said, I'd like to, sort of like to know where that bill's going about the ghost poles. Have you heard anything?
That'd be a, no, I haven't. That'd be a hairy question, I guess.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything either.
I've probably got a copy of the bill number somewhere, but although I've eliminated a lot of my past recently.
So it sounds like right now it's still, it's a borough issue because they're the, the lead dog on that, on that bill project.
Yeah.
But, you know, based on what I'm hearing, if the borough took an aggressive stance and let the chips fall where they may, if it doesn't affect anybody's service.
No.
By, by strapping something to a pole, for what it's worth, that's the way I'd go, but.
Well, I mean, we own a bucket truck, we own a chainsaw, and like I said, their, their precedent was set about 15, 18 years ago now.
Mm-hmm.
Very, very close to that.
Bright, unfortunately, Bright Speed does not have a good reputation. The word "speed" should not be in their name.
Well, phone company utility, period.
Yeah.
Because they, it seems like one phone company buys it, they run out the 10 years with ownership so that they can depreciate it, then they sell it to another phone company who owns it for about 10 years, they run out 10 years so that they can depreciate it, and then they sell it to another phone company. In the meantime, nothing gets fixed.
Right. No one wants to do the work.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're not going to solve it, but we've given a lot of advice.
Okay.
Chad, anything else on that? Okay. Deborah, we have here, I should have asked you this before to go first, but what's the, what's the timeline on the half-year billing?
The half-year billing is going to start July 1st to, sorry, that's okay, December 31st.
Right.
So we did start prepping the bills to go out and we didn't get it, Freedom wasn't able to get it on the actual bill, so we came up, the same cover letter that we send out, and I just added a blurb in there that this is for a half-year billing cycle from these dates to this date, and then the full year moving to a calendar year will start January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2026. So they have that in there. And then I'm hoping when we, you know, transition to the new software, if people haven't paid the half-year cycle, that they can include that on one bill, so when it goes out, it can be a reminder that, you know, the six-month, half-year cycle wasn't paid and the, the new full year, so maybe they can have kind of a combo bill reminder instead of mailing it out twice, because it costs around $1,200 to $1,400 to send these mailers out.
Right.
To 18, almost 1,900 people in the borough. So I'm just looking at, you know, saving some of the, the mailing cost if, if somehow we can work that out with the billing, which I think they should be able to, they said they could, so hopefully.
They did? Oh, good. They take one software would pick up the other?
Well, yeah, to transfer it over and then have the bill, the existing bill that's due and then, because they can do credits and, you know, debit, so if somebody overpays, we should be able to keep that in and, and put it towards the next year's bill.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll see, you know, as, as that evolves. And then also for the rates, rules and regulations, I believe we're good with that. Adams approved that, so I'll get that posted on the website.
Good. Please, please, before the bills go out.
Yep, absolutely.
True.
Anybody have any questions about that?
No, it's going to be an adventure.
Yep.
You're going to get tons of phone calls.
And a lot of payments because we're doing it twice, so.
Oh, yep. Okay, Chad, Stevens Run.
So I gave you a copy of the cost estimate that I had promised last month, and let me just first just recap what we talked about. So what we've identified is the first three priority areas, the first three areas that we're also going to be working with the borough solicitor on identifying the ownership of. We decided that project one was Gilliland Avenue to Carlisle Street, that's the highest priority, but we didn't want to wait for grant money for that, because if we wait, because you got to do design first, the grant money that's available right now will not fund construction unless it's shovel-ready, so you had to do the design first. So until you get the, the grant money and then you do the design, you're looking at years away, and we didn't really want to wait for that. So what we wanted to do is, was pay for the design in-house for that first phase. There's also on the back of this sheet, another cost estimate with almost the exact same cost for design, that the design on the back is for this Gilliland alley. The difference here is the, the number, this, this number came from project number two, which is the next phase, so it's a little bit confusing there. It's basically two, two projects that are the same thing. The only difference is this one has grant admin on it for $1,135. Reason why that grant, submitting the, the grant application for that second phase, and again, the second phase is behind Gettysburg Glass off of Water Street, that's that section of this.
So I'm, I'm confused. This, the 57885?
It's the same, it's the same cost estimate as the same, as, as the other one. This first, the first one though, that I don't, you want to get, it's confusing the way Jared set this up, but.
It's 56 and 175.
It's 56, 750.
Right.
And then if you look at the 57885, the only difference is the grant application, and really the grant application's only for that second phase, it's not for the first phase right now. So really what you'd be authorizing, if you wanted me to move forward with this, is the 56, 750 at this point, because the grant application for that first phase wouldn't be for at least another year or two from now, once this thing's designed, once this is shovel-ready.
Right.
But it's the exact same number, I think Mike pointed out, the fact if they look at the Borough Council.
Agenda.
Agenda for tonight, there is the motion for the resolution for that grant application to Commonwealth Finance Authority for that second, for the design of the second phase, it just happens to be the same, it's basically the same project, and design is very similar for both things. You got to do the same amount of survey work, same amount of design work, it's the construction that's going to be significantly different.
Right.
So again, the only difference between what's on the council agenda, the 57885, and then the 56, 750 is that grant application, that $1,000. And, and we did this, if you could, one other reminder is if you look back four or five years ago, we did a grant application and we didn't get the money back then, but we've already had most of that stuff pulled together, so it didn't, it wasn't a heavy lift to pull that together again, that's why it's only $1,000 or so. Usually a grant application can be, you know, sometimes they're $10,000 or $20,000, but just to, to give you a reminder there, there wasn't a whole lot that we had to do to pull that grant application together at this point, so. So that's the kind of the cost estimate there, you can see the design, of course, the top of it there is all the construction, that's just a really preliminary construction estimate, of course we'll.
Is that, is that in what year dollars? Is that?
That's, that's today's year.
Right.
With only a 10% contingency, which won't cover inflation, you know, even at 3% for another three or four years, so it'll probably go up if it's three or four years from now.
So it's, it's roughly $700,000.
Yeah, you could easily say $700,000.
Plus each year that we go forward.
Plus 3% a year if you wanted to say it.
At least three.
Mm-hmm. And of course, we, we haven't designed this yet, right? Authorizing tonight is, is a design for the project.
Is a design, right, yeah, yeah.
Once we design it, we'll be revising this cost estimate on exactly what we need to do, you know, we made some assumptions to come up with, you know, all these, there's a lot of numbers on there, and number of cubic yards of this and linear feet of that, and so, so we're taking a stab at some of those things. But that's the best guess that we could come up with at this point. Again, it looks like the engineering in this is around between 56 and 60. Now, the only other thing I wanted to say is this, you can see the, the line items that are covered with the engineering, their survey, preliminary design, final design, permits, and the easements and right-of-way. This does not include any of the solicitor's time, so we do have a number at, at through $10,000 at that effort, but that doesn't include legal time, we're going to be working with the borough solicitor, of course, on some of that as well, so I did want to make you aware of that in terms of if you're looking at the overall project cost, there will be some of that as well.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's hard to say until we get into it, how, exactly how much that effort's going to be.
Right. Well, speaking of that, when, when I think about this project, the house that burned that's right along the Stevens Run, what's, anybody know the status of that?
Which one?
It's the one, it was the old vape house, it's right in the corner.
Cockle's Corner.
Cockle's Corner, yeah.
It's under permit.
It's on the agenda tonight for.
Oh, it is? Oh, 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 good. Oh, oh, good, so, so there's some action occurring. Hot dog. Okay, good.
We have, they have applied for permits to do the restoration, so we'll see, they have a year, the land use permit is good for one year, so.
Oh, good, because, I mean, nothing's been done since it burned and it's been.
I think it was insurance issues and waiting for get approvals and things like that, so.
Oh, good, good. Excellent, excellent. Just wondering, any questions? We're good? Do we need a motion here, or have we?
I don't, I don't know that it takes a motion for professional staff to be authorized, but it doesn't hurt.
I, I think you should do something.
Yeah.
Just to document it.
Yeah, I, I agree. So solicitor.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I've said too much. Well, I think your motion would just be authorizing CS Davidson to proceed with design, correct? I mean, that's all that you're contemplating to do at this point.
For project one, Gilliland Alley to Carlisle Street. Got it. Karen?
Are we allowed to name, I didn't name the, the projects in the minutes for, yet last time, because I didn't know that we were, so we can name them now?
You can, you can name, you can name that project, we just wanted to keep property owners' names out of it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can name it the Gilliland Avenue to Carlisle Street.
To Carlisle Street, yes.
Okay. So authorize CS Davidson to proceed with the design phase for Gilliland Alley to Carlisle Street.
Yeah.
Correct.
Stevens Run, chain of walls, yeah.
Stevens Run Walls.
Where's it, are you stopping on which side of Gilliland Avenue?
So if you remember, everything on the west side of that we just did, it's, it's.
Okay, so it's the south.
It's the bridge.
Over.
It's from the bridge to the Carlisle Street.
Yes.
Wow. What a price tag.
Yeah, that's not a lot of space, is it?
If you look, if you look at, there was actually two bridges right there, right? The Coon, we did everything west of Coon, and we, that piece in the middle is all concrete, so there's nothing to do there. So it's just a piece from east of Gilliland, then that's where the stone walls are, where Late Night Bites is, that's, that's the walls we're talking about.
Wow. That's sobering, when you really think the amount of walls that.
Who's responsible for the walls under Carlisle Street?
Hmm. It's ironically, Robbie and I have just had some correspondence with, with PennDOT about that, so they own that bridge, PennDOT owns that bridge, and, and the wall's under the street, so that's basically a bridge. It's, the walls are, are abutments, bridge abutments. Now, we do own a stormpipe that connects to that bridge abutment, which is failing, so Robbie and I just had a correspondence with them within the last couple of weeks about that, fixing that stormpipe. They're giving us time, they don't expect it to be done overnight, a year or two from now, but there is a stormpipe that's just separating from the bridge, you got to dig it up, reposition the pipe, put everything back in.
Is that stormpipe under the bridge?
No, it connects to the side of the bridge.
Yeah.
Connects into the side.
Into the sidewall.
Yep, into the sidewall, into the bridge abutment, and it's just pulling out of the, of the, of the bridge abutment.
Okay, so.
And unfortunately, even in the state road, we still are responsible for the pipes, anything in the surface of the street, like the inlet top, the Freeman grate, that's PennDOT's.
Right.
The pipes and the box below the street, that's our, that's the boroughs.
Yeah, and that's not one that you can threaten to fill with concrete.
No, no. You'll lose that one.
We can't, we can't abandon that one.
No.
So that's not included in this, because that would have to be done?
Yeah, that, we're, we're anticipating that that's going to get, happen in-house within the next year here. That's not really something that we can wait for years down the road. It, it kind of needs fixed, they're right, it needs fixed.
And that's taking the water off Carlisle Street?
Yes.
Right into the timer. Okay. Karen, you want to give a shot at it again?
authorize CS Davidson to proceed with the design of the Stevens Run Wall from Gilliland Alley to Carlisle Street in the amount of $56,750.
I think that's right. Motion? Yes. So moved? Second?
Second.
Second, Kurt. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. It passes? Good. We can keep marching forward a little bit at a time. Thank you.
Lot of money for a short piece of.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we're just, yeah, we're just browsing here, that's a lot of money for.
Two walls and.
Short section.
Short section. Very short. And what's sobering is that if that's. An indication of what's to come, we're talking tens of millions. Yes, yep. To do this.
And to be fair, so, so this is one of the worst sections, right?
Right.
The Bream Alley, this one.
Right.
These priorities, the one behind Gettysburg Glass, they'll get cheaper. That's why we were.
A promise?
Yeah, a promise. Famous last words, right?
Promise?
But, but, but it is most likely that they're not going to be as complicated as these first couple, you know, once we get past these first couple, it's going to start opening up and I think our, we were, it was a really, really large range, but we were looking at like five to 10 million for, for everything.
Right. So. From your lips to God's ears.
Yeah. Ain't going to cover it.
Yeah, I'm afraid. Okay, we're going to move on, there's no new business, public comment, there is. No public. So any.
Mike, we still have to make the motion for the land studies.
The land studies?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
No, it's on the wrong one. Never mind. Sorry.
That was last time. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that was last week. Okay.[1594.16] Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments about anything that's coming up for, okay? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
And second.
Oh, thank you, Kurt, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you in August, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call to order this business meeting for the Borough Council for the Borough of Gettysburg for Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five, seven P.M. If you would all please join me, we will start this meeting as we always do with a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I do have one opening remark slash announcement this evening that I would like to make. As many of you, I'm sure, are aware, yesterday was the last day of Robert Glennie's employment with the borough, so I'd like to introduce everybody tonight to our officer in command, Chris Evans. He's a sergeant here in the department, he stepped up and offered to help us lead the department through this next phase, and he'll be filling some of the chief's roles here, especially in our public meetings. If you get a chance, please introduce yourselves, he's a hell of an officer, and we're heck, we're lucky to have him. So thank you for joining us, sir. An executive session was conducted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg immediately following the adjournment of its monthly work session public meeting held May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, consistent with Section seven zero eight A one and Section seven zero eight A five of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section seven zero eight A one and Section seven zero eight A five of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment, appointment, and terms and conditions of employment of current or prospective borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business, which if conducted in public could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. That takes us to the approval of the agenda and minutes. I would accept a motion to approve the June ninth, two thousand twenty-five agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We have an agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of the council business meeting for May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and council work session minutes of May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any errors, omissions, or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. That's gonna take us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. We ask that you use the podium, please limit yourself to five minutes. We need you to state your name and address of residence. Anyone who is here to speak tonight, please make sure, doubly sure you are signed in at the podium by the door. Public comment.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brandon Stone, and I serve as the Chair of the Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board. I am here on behalf of the board to explain and support our recommendation to deny the demolition request for ninety-nine Steinware Avenue. The property, constructed in eighteen ninety-three, is a contributing structure to the Gettysburg Battlefield Historic District, a district that is both nationally recognized and locally designated. Though modest in scale, this building retains historic features, its original massing and roofline, a historically appropriate porch configuration, and a distinctive second-floor bay window characteristic of a Queen Anne-style structure. These are not incidental details, they help give Steinware Avenue its historic identity and its streetscape cohesion. During our discussion, we considered the impact of demolition. Removing this building would not only create a visual void, but also a cultural one as well. It would undermine both the intent and the letter of the Secretary of Interior's standard for historic preservation, and potentially set a precedent for incremental loss within our historic district. The board's recommendation to deny this request is grounded in our charge to preserve the architecture, historical and cultural fabric of Gettysburg, whether it be from seventeen seventy-six, eighteen sixty-three, or just fifty years old. We believe this property tells a story worth protecting, not just for us, but for future generations. Now, some may understandably ask, how does this differ from the recent demolition on Baltimore Street? That's a fair and important question. In the case of Baltimore Street, the structure was determined to be structurally unsound, with severe deterioration and a loss of the majority of its original architectural details. And just as important, and this is key, the approved replacement is a project that serves the public good. An accessible welcome center with public restrooms is something the downtown core clearly needs. The demolition was weighed carefully in light of those factors and was seen as an exception, not a precedent. In contrast, ninety-nine Steinware Avenue is still structurally sound. It retains historic fabric, contributes meaningfully to the architectural and cultural continuity of Steinware Corridor. Its demolition would leave a visible and contextual void, and it would set a concerning precedent for the incremental erosion of our historic district. As Harb Chair, I want to emphasize, preservation is not about stopping change. It's about going and guiding it thoughtfully and responsibly. We believe ninety-nine Steinware Avenue still has value and can be adapted for modern use while maintaining its historic character. I ask Borough Council to uphold our recommendation and continue to support the long-term protections of Gettysburg's built history. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Public comment?
My name is Jackie Jacqueline White, and I am the owner of the property on ninety-nine Steinware Avenue. You know, about, I guess it was early two thousands, the Park Service decided that it wanted to move their visitor's center. At the time, it was just off of Steinware Avenue. Well, the, the businesses on Steinware panicked a little bit and decided, we need to get together and talk about this. So we did, and then we met up with the people from Main Street Gettysburg, and they helped us to create a Business Improvement District. It's a designated grouping from the state of Pennsylvania. It was the best thing to happen to Steinware Avenue. I met people that were my neighbors' business down the street, that I had never met before. And, gosh, the good things that have come out of that have just been fantastic. We have flowers on the streets, we have events, we have, we gained seven million dollars to restore the, and make the streets, the sidewalks, the trees, benches. It's, it's a beautiful place now, and it really made a huge difference for Steinware Avenue. But that was ten years ago. Now, Steinware Avenue needs help. And one of the things that happened in two thousand and nine, the Steinware bid, we call it Business Improvement District, organized and got a report done. It's called the Gettysburg, Heart of Gettysburg District Revitalization Plan. And in this plan, it said that there was a park on Steinware, that it would be a place for gathering people to have activities and would draw more folks to come. That was sixteen years ago that we had this dream. And for sixteen years, we've been meeting, we meet every month, we advertise, and like I said, do all kinds of events and, and good things for the avenue. But now, we would like to have a park. So, when the Articles of Freedom, excuse me, Charters of Freedom, okay, these folks showed up to, both, they came to the bid meeting and they came to Main Street Gettysburg and said, we will give you for free, Gettysburg, these Charters of Freedom. It's the Declaration of Independence, it's the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the Civil Rights Amendments, and we'd like to add one more, the Gettysburg Address. We thought, this would be great for Steinware Avenue. You know, we're excited about the fact that there's good things happening on the square, and Baltimore Street is getting some good help, hopefully that's gonna be redone. Now, we're, in a year, we're going to have a welcome center that's on Baltimore that's gonna be very close to Steinware Avenue. And we're excited that there's gonna be this corridor that goes the whole way from the square down, and we need to have something on Steinware Avenue to pull these people over. We think that this park and this Charters of Freedom are the perfect thing that would help. It would give a, a park, a beautiful space for people, the residents of Gettysburg, and all, as well as our visitors, to sit. They would be able to read the Declaration of Independence and then look up, and there's a house that was built in this very same year, seventeen seventy-six. There is the Gettysburg Address, and right beside them is the Gettysburg National Cemetery where Lincoln gave the Gettysburg Address. I mean, it's the perfect location. So, in the motion that Harb made, you did say something about, you know, well, maybe you could find another location on the property. Well, we looked, and there really isn't any. Any, but you talk to any of the people here who are from the Steinware bid, they will tell you the parking is a major problem on Steinware. So to give up parking spaces.
Please.
Excuse me?
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay, so. I look at it that what we're doing at this park is we are taking back the Dobbin House and a little corner of Gettysburg to the colonial period. You know, we have monuments all over the place for the Civil War. We need a place in Gettysburg that honors the colonial folks, too, that came here, our founding fathers of our town. We could put little waysides in the park that would say, you know, why was the town named Gettysburg? And how was Adams County formed? This could be an educational thing, it could be a civic engagement with the Charters of Freedom. And I look at tonight as a, not only a gift for a, a little park that would help Steinware Avenue and be a, a good thing for the people of Steinware Avenue and of Gettysburg, but also a one-time opportunity, one time, that you have tonight. You could create a legacy that will last for hundreds of years. These Articles of Freedom are meant to spend for hundreds of years. And, again, we want to help Gettys, help Steinware Avenue businesses, they, they need help. Do you know that there are seven empty or going out of business properties on Steinware Avenue right now? Seven. And, and we didn't, we never had that before. We need a spark, we need a destination. And the park and the Articles of Freedom were, are just a ticket to do that. But to say that we need it, you can not listen to me. I brought along, I'm very thrilled that some of our Steinware businesses are here tonight, and they can tell you a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
My name's Tony Strickland, I own property at fifty-three and forty-one Steinware Avenue. And you guys have never seen me here before, but I've been in business fifty-three years in Gettysburg. So I can only tell you about the changes that I've seen. But I know that Steinware Avenue would be a super improvement to have people spend some time, have a park, be free, not come in our stores and tell us about how they hate the parking fees. I mean, it just would be wonderful. How you, how you could possibly not approve something like this when it doesn't cost you a nickel? It would seem to me that the Borough of Gettysburg would be looking for this to happen there. You know, you, I, I mean, I've gone through it all. I had the guy hit my building at seventy miles an hour four years ago and, and burned down five thirty-one Baltimore Street. Seven months, I tried to get, I tried to get the borough to accept to rebuild the property. We ran out of time, and thanks to, thanks to the prices of everything, we simply couldn't rebuild it. Now, look at it now. I'm seventy-four, I've been there fifty-three years. I have announced my retirement, but I'm not closing those stores if I can help it. My wife is sick with cancer, I have to stop. But you need to approve this.
Public comment?
Hello, Wade Leedy with Tommy's Pizza and Fourscore Beer Company. I stand before you tonight representing myself and my brother Drew Leedy. As co-owners of Tommy's Pizza and Fourscore Beer Company, we would like to voice our support for Jackie White and her effort to establish a park to erect the Char, the Charters of Freedom. As next-door neighbors, our property would be impacted the most by any demolition and construction, but any such minor inconveniences would pale in comparison to the benefits the park would bring to not only our business, but also that of all of Steinware. Jackie has worked tirelessly to help promote the name of Gettysburg since opening the Dobbin House Tavern, and her effort to establish this park is further proof of her value to Gettysburg and our tourism industry. It is no secret that Steinware Avenue has been affected most by the relocation of the visitor's center. There are currently seven empty or going out of business storefronts along Steinware, a disappointing trend that seems to only be headed in the wrong direction. The Charters of Freedom Park would be a breath of fresh air into the life and vitality of the avenue. On May twenty-seventh, there was an essay from the council president posted on the official Gettysburg Borough Facebook page explaining the need for the Gettysburg Station project. A direct quote from the essay reads, quote, "We have one industry here in the borough, tourism," end quote. If that is our one true industry, then surely the top priority for borough and other elected and unelected Gettysburg officials should be to find ways to increase tourism, or at the very least, maintain our current level of visitation, within reason, of course. Speaking of within reason, this proposal is slated to be a small park showcasing copies of the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence. It will be built on private land and funded and maintained privately. It is certainly not a multi-story property development that raises more questions than it offers in solutions, or a downtown bathroom that will be maintained with public funds. The park sounds pretty reasonable to me. And lastly, I'd point, like to point out the absolute terrible optics from just last week where borough officials were celebrating the demolition of a structure to make way for a new downtown visitor's center and bathroom. While I fully support the construction of the new visitor's center, it is a terrible look to show the world how great this venture is, while at the same time denying a local business owner the exact same luxury to demolish a non-Civil War building and erect the park for the purpose of increasing tourism. I think that some of our local officials are too laser-focused on what they personally think is good for Gettysburg and don't actually listen to the residents and the business owners in town. The Charters of Freedom Park has broad support. Maybe it is time to show those with a vested interest in this project that you do listen and vote no on the Harb recommendation. Thank you.
Public comment?
Hello, Nathan Mares with the Steinware Avenue Board Chair, Lincoln Links, Best Western, and Quality Inn. So it was mentioned about the other building that was torn down also, and how that it was a dilapidated building and gonna fall down. Do you know that Harb also said no to that ten years ago while it was privately held? It took that building being turned over to the borough to have something happen. So it was also denied there. So just wanna let everybody know that that project was one-time denied. So, does this project need turned over to the borough to make that happen? Will we approve it then? Everybody talks about the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary. What's going to set Gettysburg apart? This park, this will bring people here forever. It has a time capsule in it that lasts a hundred years, two-hundred-and-fifty years, and five-hundred years. This park isn't going anywhere, it's not gonna become a gas station. Like mentioned at the Harb meeting, too, that this is why Harb was put in to eliminate gas stations from. gas stations from popping up. So, and when you look at that building, nobody's coming to town and walking down the street and stopping in front of this red house and going, oh, man, I'm glad that house is here. That's what really brought me here. This park is going to bring tourists here. It's going to be a place for residents to enjoy and tourism to flourish. Thank you.
Public comment.
Hi, everybody. Andrew Dalton, the President and CEO of the Adams County Historical Society. We're at 625 Biglerville Road, just on the edge of town. Appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of this project tonight. I actually passed around a map, or our wonderful friends at the borough passed around an overlay kind of showing the historical surroundings of the Dobbin House in the immediate aftermath of the Civil War, 1868, 1869. So, I just wanted to briefly speak just directly to the history of the site, since that's what we're all here about. You know, we're balancing history of different eras, you know, history of the 1890s, history of the 1860s, and then, of course, the history of the Dobbin House, 1776. I feel very strongly that we have many sites that we should be proud of in the borough from all these different eras, but there's only one site from the Revolution, and that's the Dobbin House, built in 1776. It is the oldest structure in our borough, and I think we all owe a great debt of gratitude to Jackie for saving this building and turning it into the gem that it is today. But I just wanted to point out that the two structures that are in question, the one that's to be demolished and the other to be moved, are in the direct front yard view shed of the 1776 building. If you were to walk down, you know, past this structure at the time of the Civil War, you'd be able to see a lot more of the Dobbin House than you see today. And of course, if you were here in 1776, there was no Steinware Avenue, but there was a path that led from the building out to the Baltimore-Shippen'sburg Road, which was a 1760s road that cut through and formed the original intersection where the Gettys family had their tavern. So, I just wanted to point out in this rendering that if we are concerned with preserving the history of each specific individual neighborhood or section of the town, that this is the only place where we can preserve the revolutionary history, the colonial era history of Gettysburg. It is the only thing left. And so, I feel very strongly that this is a very modest request in order to bring this area back to how it appeared at the time of the American Revolution when it was first built. I, when I first heard about this, I just loved the idea because all of this green space would be coming back into an area where you could once stand there and see this structure in all of its, you know, grander, the beautiful stone house, and you really can't now. If you're walking up the street, you have to kind of get around the side of those buildings to then look back. So, history, obviously, because of my job, because of what I do, is very, very important. I don't take any of these things lightly. You know, I think we should try to save historic buildings when we can, but I think this is a really special circumstance, and I think, you know, if you were to visit Mount Vernon and there was an 1890s structure partially blocking it on the road, I don't think anybody would be questioning what was best to do in that situation. So, I really support this. I think that this is just a priceless, unique, vital part of our Gettysburg history, and I think that this project not only opens this place up, returns it to how it once appeared, but it also allows us to connect the dots with the Revolution and the Civil War and our founding. So, I hope you'll support it. I don't come out here much, but I really admire the work that you do, and I thought this was important enough for us to come out and speak in favor of it. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Public comment.
Thank you for allowing this comment. I'm Carl Peters, talking to the President of Destination Gettysburg, and I'm also speaking in favor of the project. I don't take lightly the suggestion of demolishing the building that's in question, so I can certainly understand the feelings from that side. But just as Andrew, his focus is history, my focus is tourism. So, from that standpoint, Gettysburg has done very well, rebounded very well from COVID. 2023, which is the most recent year that we have information, Gettysburg Adams County set a record in visitor spending at $786 million. But we're seeing with the current economy and concerns about, you know, where that's headed, probably a softening this year of travel, and as we've heard, there's concerns on Steinware Avenue with the business levels there. So, as much success as we've had as a community, and we want that to continue and to grow going forward, we need to be proactive and not just hope that we can move forward with what we've got today. This is a really unique opportunity, completely done with private investment for this project, the Charters of Freedom to come into Gettysburg. If this project doesn't move forward now, I, from what I understand, we won't get a second chance. This is the opportunity. So, I really encourage the council to consider approving this project. Steinware Avenue is a vital part of our tourism package in town, and it does need support. I'm excited about the Lincoln Links that opened this year. We need more for families and visitors to do in the evenings and, you know, after dinner, and I think this park will be another great addition. It would give people a reason to go up to that part of Steinware Avenue, and once they're up there, they'll flow through up and back Steinware Avenue and really support those businesses. Research shows us that over 50% of the visitors to Gettysburg are repeat visitors. To keep them coming back, we need to have more for them to do and provide new experiences, and this would be a great opportunity. So, I do hopefully request that the council will approve this project. Thank you.
Public comment.
I am Brian Kennel, and I grew up on Steinware Avenue. I am a resident of the Evergreen Cemetery Gatehouse. I am here to represent my views, not the Evergreen Cemetery's views. I just want to make sure everyone knows, aware of that. I've been fortunate to be resident of Gettysburg my entire life. My father was President Eisenhower's caddy. I grew up on 82 Steinware Avenue, right across from the Dobbin House. In running the cemetery since 1990, I learned a lot about our town's history. I learned about the people who thought outside the box. David McConaughey, founder of Evergreen, had a concept of a soldier's cemetery a year before the battle, took the initiative to preserve the land here at Gettysburg. James Gettys, the founder, is buried right behind where I live. The founder of the seminary and the college, Samuel Simon Schmucker. William Tipton, the photographer who, while he was with the borough, put in the trolley, had the trolley taken out to the round tops. I'm very aware of the controversies between commercialism and historic preservation. I fight it in my job. Just the other week, about a month ago, we had Channel 43 advertising ghost walks live on TV. My heart has been with Steinware Avenue since I grew up there, my first 13 years. I've seen the changes. I've seen times when there were firemen's conventions and things going on, and I've always had my eye on Steinware Avenue with an avid interest. While I've been at Evergreen, I was fortunate to help erect a monument to the women of Gettysburg with the purpose of helping to tell the story of the women throughout town. We're getting ready to put waysides up around the gatehouse that will tell the story of the gatehouse. We'll talk about the cemetery movement. We'll talk about preservation of the battlefield, and we'll talk about the historic gatehouse itself. I think there has to be a balance between history and preservation. I just learned about this project, and of course, it interests me because I've always thought Steinware Avenue, I always say, needed a shot of steroids. And what I mean by that, if you take Gettysburg Eddies, that was my concept because Eddie Plank is buried there. I always felt there should be a drive-in ICS that would tell the story of Camp Colt and Eisenhower presidency where ABC is now. But when I heard about this, I thought about all my years in this town, I notice the lack of visitors to the soldier's cemetery. And I'm asking, as a citizen, not representing Evergreen, but my experiences, that we need people who think outside the box to develop things that will attract people to Gettysburg. And the fact that this would tell the story of an era that is so often overlooked, I find it to be a rewarding project. As I see the diminished numbers in the soldier's cemetery, I'm reminded that you can't honor the dead that fought and died here, including where I live, without the living to honor them. I think it's good for our community to think outside the box and develop things to attract visitors and to teach our youngsters about our history, all periods. I'm currently releasing a book. This is not a sale. It's just an example of helping to get young people interested in our history. It's about Elizabeth Thorne, but it's seen through the eyes of the animals of the cemetery and what happened on our grounds. I support this project. As a former Steinware Avenue resident, I support it by my eyes of seeing what has happened to the soldier's cemetery and visitation, and I think this type of outside-the-box thinking, even though I don't think it's far out, is very important to strike a balance between preserving our history and getting people to experience all the years of Gettysburg. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, we're at the point in the meeting where we would typically move on from public comment. I don't want to cut anybody off, though. Can I see a show of hands if there are more people who wish to speak here on this topic? If you guys could keep it to like three minutes apiece, then we could move to the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Hello, I am Todd Mickley, 27, 213, 241 Steinware Avenue. When we formed the Business Improvement District, I was the President of Steinware Avenue Business Association, and we formed the bid because when the visitor's center moved, we were told that half of Steinware would not exist in 10 years. And by forming the bid, we had a lot, we had the borough council on our side, and we preserved this Gettysburg, a lot of tax dollars. If them businesses' buildings were gone, that's a lot of tax dollars that the Gettysburg residents or Gettysburg Borough would not have. And one thing we did, we hired Delta Development Group to tell us what we needed to do. And a lot of it was redoing buildings, which we probably had Emmett Patterson redid McDonald's, KFC was redone, Paul Witt built a hotel. There was a lot of money put into Steinware Avenue as part of the plan. Like, we invested the money because it's what we needed to do. Business had dropped, I'm going to say 40 to 50% with the visitor's center being gone. Like, we were hurting. But by forming the bid, and the council was behind us in that, that we were able to actually group together and get a lot of stuff done, including all the money for the streetscape, the underground utilities, everything we needed to do. And Delta Development also, in their plan, had for a park on Steinware Avenue. And we've looked, looked, and looked, and never been able to take a property and make it a park. It's just, it's too hard to do. And Jackie is willing to put her money up, like she is taking down one of her properties and her land for this park to help all of Gettysburg, not only Steinware Avenue, Gettysburg as a draw to bring people here. So, I am in support of this park, and I hope you will be, too.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Marcy Cropp, and I'm with Nine Steinware Avenue here in Gettysburg. I've already sent emails or emails to everyone, so you kind of know my take on the situation here that we're talking about. I am in favor of this project. So, tonight, everyone that spoke before me had wonderful points, and I, all I can do is say that I'm going to speak from my personal experience. I've grown up on Steinware Avenue. I love it there. My family's invested in many properties on the avenue, and I think this project truly honors the history that takes place there. It creates a legacy, and it also helps plan for the future. So, I hope that you all will vote in support of this project.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're going to move on in the agenda here. There is another opportunity for public comment at the end of tonight's meeting, and if you'd like to speak on a topic that is not covered in tonight's agenda, that will be an opportunity We're going to start tonight with current and old business, and we'll start in the Planning Department with Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. I remember, that, excuse me, the copy of the department report was provided electronically. We had a planning commission meeting on May 5th, but we also had, that was a special meeting, but then a regular meeting on the 19th, and then there was a zoning hearing board meeting on the 28th. The zoning hearing board meeting was regarding a special exception request for a convenience store. That application was denied. We'll be having the minutes completed here this week from that transcript that was created through the proceedings. The planning commission is in the process of reviewing the Gettysburg Station project, which that'll be a continuing project throughout the summer. Staff is also working with a development team on that issue. Tonight's motion from the department involves a quality-of-life slash code enforcement ticketing ordinance. We can answer any questions related to that material. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right. Would anybody care to make the motion under planning?
I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitor to finalize and publish for intended enactment a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 5, the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg for the purposes of implementing quality-of-life enforcement provisions relative to code enforcement ordinance violations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any last-minute questions for Mr. Whitmore? All right. That takes us to Mrs. English and the Historical and Environmental Preservation Department.
Hi, thank you. I have your manager's report in your folder. We have several items on the council motion-action. We do have them separated into two sections, since one is the highlighted demolition at 90, is it 95? Yeah, 99 Steinware. So, if you have any questions about any of the motions or my report.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. English? Please.
Yeah, I have a question. I got an email from a neighbor at 218 North Stratton Street with the windows. Can you explain that process? What I understand is that they put in windows without a permit?
That's correct.
And, so how did they get?
They were, they received a notice of violation from our code enforcement officer, Pete Griffian, and part of their requirements for rectifying that is to submit a land use application with their project scope. So, they did submit a application in March. That was reviewed and tabled due to a lack of information and, I guess, window styles that were appropriate. They did have it submitted, and John actually attended that meeting. I was unavailable. I was on some family sick leave. They did come back. They missed the April meeting. They came back in May and put in for the manager's or staff report. I am not a voting member, so I don't have any authority for what they post, that any historic feature should be repaired or restored. So, we look at the visible impacts to the window replacements to the main streetways, and any windows in good condition or repairable condition should be maintained. At that point, the owner, I think, thought in a previous application in 2020 that they had the windows on that application, which they did not. So, they took them out and received the notice of violation from code. So they took them out and received the notice of violation from code. So Harb reviewed the applicant's submittal, which originally had an internal grid system in the window, and Harb members discussed that and decided to allow them to leave the windows that were replaced, but add an external grid system to match the existing windows that are, that were the original windows in the house.
Yeah, I think the concern of the constituent was, he went about it the right way and went through the process and then had to pay, you know, maybe three times more than perhaps what the person did with, you know, not going through the process. And so I just wanted to share that, that frustration that he has.
Yeah. And further, and Deb and I were just discussing this just before the meeting, on the same street, on the same block, not 18 months ago, I don't remember the exact date, somebody did the same thing. They took out historic doors, historic windows, and I believe banisters, without permits, and put in contemporary, modern designs, and Harb made them remove all of those and put the originals back in. So I also have questions as to the inconsistency of the enforcement here. It does seem that there are some, I think, pointed questions to be answered about how these decisions are arrived at. I've asked Deb to get together with Mr. Whitmore and the ranking members of Harb to discuss, taking a hard look at how decisions like that, decisions whether it's through our consent agenda or whether it's through some sort of remediation process, are determined because it doesn't seem like we're doing that consistently. Any other questions?
No, I had the same concerns. Thank you, Mr. Berger, for bringing it up. I also question, you said code enforcement did go out and give them a notice of violation. Was there any fee paid for that, or was it just a warning?
Generally, that would just be a warning. The notice of violation provides the individual the opportunity to rectify the problem. It's one of the issues when it comes to code enforcement and building code law. It's more of a compliance basis as opposed to a punitive basis. That's one of the reasons for the code enforcement.
Sure. I understand that. But in this specific situation, wouldn't there have also been a permit fee or an application fee for, even for, even if, had they gone through the proper process, there would have been a fee, an application fee that was paid. And so I understand going out, you know, and giving a warning because that's, that's the protocol that we have right now. But I'm afraid that what's happening is people are asking for forgiveness and getting the cheaper rate way out. And what's the purpose of having the policy if they're not going to, and the permit, if we're not going to actually make sure that they follow suit? So I should have, at the beginning of the meeting, pulled this out of this, because I'm not, I will, I don't want, I will go against it.
Yeah. You know, so this is the rest of the discussion about that we just had before the meeting, too. And it's funny that this comes right on the tails of us, saying, yes, let's go ahead and authorize the creation of sterner code enforcement. It's frustrating when that enforcement is not done as it could be right now, today, except on some people it is, and then across the street it's not. That's super frustrating. And the other change we discussed is that moving forward here with these Harb motions, we need to separate out each COA into its own motion because now we're in a position where we have to deny this whole motion, and if that's how we decided to vote on that.
Is there, since we're still in discussion mode, Mr. Eastman, is there any way that I can pull off, pull one COA out of this motion? Can I make a motion now that we're already in, that we've already approved the agenda? We're in a business meeting. We've got a majority.
Technically, you should have changed that at the beginning of the meeting prior to approving the agenda. No doubt about it. But if council wishes to make a motion separating that because of the fact that, again, I believe there are several projects there that you would wish to vote in favor of, you can do that. One of the things that I would tell you, though, is that, and I was going to talk about this, if you, if council does not go with the determination or the recommendation of Harb, council in denying a approval of a COA, certificate of appropriateness, must do so in writing, and it must make findings. And there are about 14 different criteria under the ordinance that council has to do to reverse the recommendation of Harb. I'm not so sure. Are you prepared to do this? This seems to be a single issue and not based on the criteria set forth in the ordinance.
No. In fact, it wouldn't be on the criteria set forth in the ordinance. It would be on questions over the operations of Harb currently. How this got through as an approval when it should have been enforced in the exact same way that somebody across the street was treated just a year previously. But nor do we want to punish everybody who's in this giant omnibus motion here, making them wait. So if we deny the whole motion, we punish everybody.
Right.
And if you deny the whole motion, on each one of those applications, council needs to go through its ordinance and make findings on all of those provisions and then make a decision in writing. That decision is, then has to be submitted to the state. So it's no, it's no small matter to go against the recommendations of your Historic Architecture Review Board.
So I have another question. So we have approved the agenda as presented, but what is legally stopping me from saying, from separating out these motions instead of, instead of it as is as a consent agenda? Because they are different COAs. They're just typed all in the same paragraph.
What is stopping you is that that's not how the motion was framed and approved. Right.
I have a question. Does our code allow us to have a special meeting just to address the certificates of appropriateness?
You could have a special meeting if you set that at an appropriate time. Again, the provisions of your ordinance say that you're going to act on these recommendations at the next meeting following the Harb review, whether that would be a regular meeting or a special meeting. So we're a little late in that respect. We could do that in the future. Certainly would be something, if there was a matter of great controversy, that you wanted to specifically deal with that. It probably would actually be prudent for you to have a special meeting because, again, what you have said, what council has said in its ordinance, is that you're going to then review all of the factors that Harb was required to review and make specific findings in writing as to why essentially Harb was wrong in its findings in that respect.
Thank you.
So it would be good to do that if there's something that council is concerned about.
Yeah. The other issue that's sort of come to light here, too, tonight, that not this particular COA, but the next motion, sort of shines a light on, this is the second time within 12 months, really within seven months, where we've been asked to make a decision on something where we can't even review the minutes of Harb because they haven't then had their next meeting to approve their minutes. So we're not actually privy to the deliberations. I think we have a bigger problem there, and it's just, it's mostly a scheduling issue, right? Like, just the fact that their meetings are kind of cattywampus from our meetings sets us up for a structural issue where we're being asked to make determinations based on information that we really have a cursory understanding of. And on a typical application, that's not contentious. We can see the application materials. We see the photographs. We see the evidentiary submissions, but we don't necessarily need Harb's recommendations in writing, or, you know, the minutes of their meeting, because their recommendations are typically consistent with the ordinance and the design guide. Because I think we have a lot of things to look at in terms of disparities.
Yes. I would note that what the ordinance provides is it says that Harb shall issue a report. One of the options that I discussed prior at the time during our agenda meeting was whether or not we wish to have this matter remanded to Harb for them to issue an official report. However, that's not how it has been placed on the, on the, on the agenda. And I will say that based on your ordinance, it does say that you are allowed to consider the minutes of Harb as essentially its report. I think in nine out of 10 cases, maybe more, higher percentage, that's perfectly fine. I do think that puts you at a disadvantage on some matters that maybe you'd want to see more information, more thought, more analysis with regards to the criteria, because that is essentially difficult for Harb to do on the fly. That's almost an impossible charge for them.
So, anybody want to make that motion?
Well, before I do, because I guess I'll read all of it. Before I do, I will be voting against it. Not, and I feel for all of these others, but as I'm looking at these dates, this was, every single one looks like May 21st. That was like two and a half weeks ago. Am I wrong? During a public meeting held on May 21st, every single one of them. I would like more time. I'll be voting against it. A motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historical Architecture Review Board, Harb, following its review during a public meeting held on May 21st, 2025, and to approve the grants of certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-250029, minor project, 606 York Street, Promkaswamyihi, for the replacement of shingle-to-shingle roof and white downspouts with black downspouts. COA-250028, major project, 43 West Middle Street, Katrina Lutke, for the replacement of an ADA ramp, stairway, and roof. COA-250025, minor project, 25 Carlisle Street, Gettysburg College Majestic Theater, for the replacement of the main entryway doors and associated panic bars. COA-250081, major project, 170 Carlisle Street, Linda Cockle, for the repair and replacement in kind of exterior features due to fire damage that are acceptable to the board to include three exterior doors and four windows. COA-250027, major project, 43 West Middle Street, Katrina M. Lutke, for the demolition of a rear 20-foot-by-20-foot non-contributing accessory garage structure with the installation of a comparably sized asphalt pad. COA-250105, major project, 218 North Stratton Street, Matthew and Amanda Kickelberger, for the installation of exterior grids to the eight installed vinyl windows, six on the north side and two on the south side. This action is taken in consideration of the analysis of the factors and criteria set forth in the Historic District Ordinance and the findings made therein by Harb as set forth in its May 21, 2025 minutes, and such findings are hereby adopted by the Borough Council.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
So what, a vote no? A vote no on this? What are the consequences of voting?
Well, a single vote no, there are no consequences. But if council votes no, then we're going to have to immediately go to your ordinance, and you're going to have to review each one of these applications tonight. And you're going to have to make findings under your ordinance as to why you voted no for that particular application. That would be following your own rules and your own law.
Yep. And in addition to doing that, we would also have to, we'd be, we'd be rejecting somebody's ADA accommodation and forcing them to reapply. I'm not, I'm not willing to do that. It's a perfect example of why in the future we'll be separating these, but I will be voting in support of this motion.
I think this represents a lot of work done by Harb here, and I don't think that, you know, the whole class should be punished for something that maybe our policies or procedures could get better with Harb, of course, if we're finding something right now. But I don't think that just a blanket negation of all of these COAs would be appropriate.
Anyone else? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. Let's move on to the next one.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution of the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review during a public meeting held on May 21st, 2025, and to deny the grant of a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented. COA-250031, major project, 99 Steinware Avenue, Jacqueline White, for the demolition of a house and rear garage in order to construct a pocket park with monuments, and then request that based upon the undesirable outcome of the proposed project, the assistance from council and the Borough Planning Department to review this project in accordance with Historic District Ordinance 11-110, Section 3, demolition B, criteria 3, and that the demolition be reviewed to seek a viable solution for the location of the park. This action is taken in consideration of the factors and criteria set forth in the Borough of Gettysburg Historic District Ordinance and the findings made thereon by Harb as set forth in its May 21st, 2025 meeting minutes, and such findings are hereby adopted by the Borough Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let's get into it here. So during the public comment, I did hear some murmurings throughout the room, like, how could we not support this? So two weeks ago is the first time anybody on council really heard anything about this My understanding is that a week before that, at Harb, the Harb Board only had had about eight or nine days to review this project. This is a really, really fast timetable. We are typically an agency that moves a little bit slower than I think even we would like. So it is shocking to see something move through this fast. And again, what's being asked of us here tonight is not approval of the park. What's being asked of us here tonight is to reverse Harb's decision. Those are two different things. We typically do not reverse Harb. There have been situations where I think many of us would have questioned the conclusions they came to, but typically we let those recommendations go through. And not just And not just because to reverse them is, you know, onerous for us here in the legislative process. I don't think a process that any of us has ever actually gone through in a public meeting.
Right, and I think it's important to understand, that's why, under the act itself, you are required to appoint a very specialized board with certain specialized strengths. So, I mean, again, the law is framed that you should give great weight to the recommendation of Harb, because you've actually appointed people who have specialized skills, an architect, et cetera, that you probably normally do not have. So, it is to be given great weight based on how the matter is framed. Coming down from your charge, when I say the Historic Districts Act, that's actually from the state legislation, which mandates that essentially the recipe, if you will, of your appointments on your Harb, it's to give you specialized advice and recommendation.
Yeah. And so, the composition of our Harb is noteworthy. We currently have two architects, both of whom who have experience with historic structures, one of whom has almost encyclopedic experience with historic structures. We have a realtor, a realtor who actually lives in the exact same model, Sears House, as one of the buildings being moved. And we have a member of the Steinware bid as well. It is noteworthy, I think, that their decision was unanimous. Do we know, were they all in attendance for this vote?
I believe so.
Clem Milat was absent.
Clem Milat was absent. All right.
But it was unanimous, other than Clem's absence.
Right. I've been thinking about this a lot for the last two weeks. Jill from Main Street was good enough to take me down to see the site and explain the particulars of the project to me. On its surface, I don't see anything that would be objectionable about the proposal. I think some of the questions that still are kind of ping-ponging around in my head are, is this a park? Is it deeded to the borough? Is that then taken off the tax rolls? Is it our maintenance responsibility? Are we subject to determining, you know, the hours of its use? Or is it, if it remains private property and all of those rights are retained by the owner, do they get to decide who gets to use it and who doesn't? There are all sorts of questions there, I think, that, you know, can sort of be ironed out in time, should we move forward. But I'm also trying to get to know the Harb ordinance a little bit better this week, and I did give this to all of you in our packets this week. It's not, you know, a crazy long document. It's only 20 pages, but I think I was making an errant assumption that I knew what was in it. This is a question, Brandon, you're in the room here, you can yell out some input here if you have it, and Harry, please feel free. So, my understanding before last week is that we are required to protect buildings 50 years or older in the historic district, but I think that that was a misreading of it. What I read, the way I read it this time, and perhaps I'm wrong, is that we are required to add to a list of protected buildings, anything built within the last 50 years that has particularly representative architectural characteristics. Would you do me a favor? Would you take the mic up there? The folks at Homer are not able to hear you back there. Could you repeat that last bit, please?
So, in addition to being able to do a survey of the entire contributing properties in the district, we have a enumerated list of responsibilities, including what you said.
Okay. So, I was correct in my original, perhaps misunderstanding, that we're required to protect buildings 50 years or older regardless of their architectural uniqueness?
So, one of the questions I have for the larger audience, and maybe even for the attorney, is that the ordinance was dated at a particular point in time. Does it go from that point in time? Is it this point in time right now? And there's not a lot of clarity in there, so I could see where you came up with your question.
Right, I mean, should we here in 2025 be protecting buildings from 1975? Is that what we think of when we think of historic Gettysburg, right? Is that, are people coming here to see 1970s construction?
Unfortunately, I would say no, but the way that we have interpreted, and Deb might be able to assist me on this, is that would be correct. A building that is older than 1975 would be in purview of Harb's review through in the historic district.
And so, your assertion would be that this particular structure, which dates back to, I've heard, 1890-something, I've also heard 1907.
1893, it's 132 years old.
Maybe the exact date is hard to peg down.
We have the articles. Andrew was kind enough to provide the articles from the newspaper.
You would assert that it has distinctive architectural characteristics that should be preserved?
Very much so, yes.
On what criteria besides that would Harb have denied the request for demolition?
So, in addition to the structure, which in itself contains many of its original details, the street itself is one of the concerns that is laid out in the Secretary's Guidelines, and so that is the streetscape in its entirety. And so, throughout town, that really forms a lot of our decision. In a prior meeting, we talked at length on the impact of putting a garage on the sidewalk. And so, the conversation of the streetscape itself, especially on what is a corridor that was developed to serve the veterans in Gettysburg. The Steinware corridor emerges as part of the response to the demand for people coming to Gettysburg. So, what you see is a moment in time of great prosperity in the town. And so, those Victorian buildings that line Steinware, and I'm not sure if it was in your packet, and I'm not sure how many people in the audience would remember this, but there were four more Victorian homes in front of the Dobbin House. And so, that street was completely a street. It looked like any other street in America. So, one of the concerns we have is that erosion of what the streetscape looks like.
Or looked like.
Looked like.
Right. Because it certainly doesn't have that character anymore. All right, so then there's this second half of the motion, which I don't think we've ever dealt with before, at least maybe Chris and Patty have, but I've never seen this. When the Board deems a proposed demolition undesirable, it may recommend that the demolition be postponed for a period not to exceed nine months for the consideration of the application by the Borough Council. During this period, so as to render demolition unnecessary, the Board and Borough Planning Department shall make all reasonable efforts in identifying alternatives to demolition or resolving problems that resulted in the request for the proposed demolition. Now, obviously, there are no problems that have contributed to the request for demolition here. The building's not falling over, it's not in massive disrepair, it's not collapsing in on itself. In a case where the Board recommends that the Borough Council approves demolition of a building, a good-faith effort shall be made by the owner or applicant to move the building to a nearby site. This is the next stipulation. If moving a building slated to be demolished is economically or practically infeasible, all efforts shall be made to salvage architectural features of the building for use within the borough. So, in the motion, we're being asked to employ the third stipulation there, which...
Is to look for an alternative. I think the community would benefit from the idea of Freedom Plaza. It comes at an expense, though, that I think we might be able to avoid. You yourself mentioned that it only seems like you've come to know about this just recently. So, alternative might be possible. Now, I know speaking with Ms. White that there aren't a lot of other alternatives, and so the real challenge comes down to is what is acceptable.
So, I mean, one alternative is moving the structure, but what sounds like what you're saying is that the architectural characteristics of this building were unique to this area. We don't see rows of Victorians anywhere else in the borough, so even were there an empty lot that could be reasonably or possibly acquired, it wouldn't be moving to a similar neighborhood that had similar character. It would just be, it would be a fish out of water. So, moving it might save the building, but it doesn't preserve the streetscape or the characteristics of the building.
That is correct, sir.
All right. So, those are all the questions that have been kind of shooting around in my head. What's everybody else thinking?
You folks have been placed in a bit of a difficult position here this evening. Based on the commentary of the public, you would be actually, or it seems to be, appear that they believe that you are voting on whether or not the project that Ms. White is proposing is appropriate. Candidly, this is not a matter of land use. You folks are working on land use with your zoning ordinance. Whether or not something is appropriate for its zone and district, you've already ruled upon in terms of your zoning ordinance. I presume that this would be something that you have already, would have already authorized. I cannot imagine that this is something that's inconsistent with your zoning. You know, I mean, and the reason I'm saying you're being put in a very difficult position is this concept that, because, let me help you, that's not your charge here this evening. You're not voting on the project that's being proposed. In fact, it shouldn't be proposed to you in any, I mean, again, I mean, we have a process to go through in terms of, I mean, our subdivision, land development approval, et cetera. What you're solely charged with is to determine whether or not, because you are dealing specifically with an application for demolition, whether or not, under your historic district ordinance, you should accept the recommendations of Harb and rule that a certificate of appropriateness is not to be issued, if you will, for the demolition of this building. And Matt, you, it sounds like you've done a lot of homework here wrestling over this, and indeed, I mean, it was such an important issue that there have been a number of modifications to your ordinance that have come about specifically on the issue of building demolition, that I think had become a very difficult issue for Harb. And I think Harb felt that they didn't have all of the necessary tools in order to deal with a lot of the issues surrounding demolition. Thus, and Mr. Schaefer was a very strong proponent of the ordinance revisions that were made. So, this is not, I mean, the text that you refer to, Mr. Moon, is not part of the original text, but was part of a modification that was done later on. Honestly, I mean, you have some really good and intelligent folks here telling you that this is a wonderful project for the borough. Ms. White gives a very compelling argument and statement. Mr. Strickland, Mr. Leedy, Mr. Mares, Mr. Dalton, Mr. Peterzak, Mr. Kennel, Ms. Crop. I mean, what people are saying is correct in terms of, and has to be compelling to you about the nature of the project, but that's not what you're voting on this evening.
Absolutely not.
You are very specifically voting on an application, not an application for the project, an application for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the building.
Right. So, enter the demolition checklist. This is a document that Harb has, where when demolition is requested, this is a four-page guide that talks about the criteria that have to be met in the application for demolition. Mr. Stone, would it be Harb's assertion that these criteria were met?
It would not be.
It would not? Are there specific criteria that you feel were not met in the application?
I do not believe there was a structural engineer report associated with it. I assume the applicant yielded the building was sound. Additionally, we were also missing page five from the application, which answered all those questions. We got that the night of our meeting.
Okay. I'm sure that was an oversight.
It was.
Yes, ma'am. Would you mind approaching the microphone as well?
According to the application, there were two buildings that we're talking about. One is 95 Steinware Avenue, and the other one, no, a rear garage. Is it possible to separate those two as you talk about the appropriateness of each of those buildings? It's here. Demolition of a house and a rear garage.
You're talking about the cinder block structure in the back with the rotting roof?
Yes.
Yeah, knock it down, nobody cares. No, I'm kidding.
It's more than 50 years old.
Okay, it's more than 50 years old.
Was that part of the, did Harb, did Harb take a look at that structure? Yeah.
We didn't get to reviewing it, because at the time, Ms. White's focus was the removal of the primary building, so we didn't get into the conversation of whether or not it would have been acceptable to remove just the garage.
I mean, of the two structures, if you were going to save one, it would be the house, right?
Absolutely.
Right. So, I think that the application would assume if you were going to raise the house, that the garage would also be fair game, right? I mean, is the application by parcel, or is it by structure on a parcel?
It's by structure on a parcel.
And so, did the application cover both structures?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if Brendan had a chance to say, I just want to reiterate that I understand that you have ordinances. I understand that you have procedures you must follow, but at the same time, you are elected officials. You're here to help the people of Gettysburg, and here are these people who are asking for something.
So, that's a really compelling point, and it's something that we don't talk a lot about when we talk about Harb, and probably we should, right? There are many people who go before Harb and want something simple, like energy-efficient windows on their house, and they are denied, and they are not then brought in here by borough staff and having their cases pled, right? There's a disparity here. And it speaks to appropriateness. We are elected officials, and what's being asked of us here is to break our own law, because we're being asked to, right? And that's something I'm struggling with personally, right? Because the person who calls me and says, "Why can't I put windows on my house?", that's a compelling argument, too. But that person has no recourse.
And again, what I would say, too, that, I mean, it was a very, very important conversation, and it was of council's past, not this council. I was not the solicitor at the time, it was before my tenure, for council to determine that it was going to create a historic district and that it was going to legislatively value historic components of your... historic components of, of your, of the town. And not only is it because, of course, you are elected officials and so forth, but I've got to tell you that you are, I mean, the borough is an instrumentality of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. You are only limited to work within the confines of the laws that have been, that have created you and that you've created. You can't just do what you want. Because you've been elected, you need to follow the law. But again, you know, I mean, there could be larger issues here. Maybe you want to take a look at or review your historic district ordinance and some of the provisions. But I can tell you that the provisions regarding the raising and demolition of buildings was, it was looked at very, very carefully. And a previous council determined that that was an appropriate consideration. And again, this isn't borough-wide. You've created a historic district, and that, that district had to be submitted. I mean, that, the whole ordinance had to be submitted to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for approval, to make sure it was proper under the governing law that allowed you to create that, which of course it was. So.
So Harry, let me ask you. Were we to vote no on this motion, what would be the process the borough, if any, has to then negotiate? Like, I mean, with this last motion, you know, if we wanted to deny those, we had to review?
Same, same.
Fourteen stipulations.
Same year. But I think even more, actually, because there are additional criteria that go into the issue of building demolition. So you, in order for you to, to reverse or not act consistent with the recommendation of your Historic Architectural Review Board, which has been set up consistent with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, you need to go through your ordinance and go through and make finding, very specific findings, as to why, under your criteria, the building should not, or that you should grant the certificate of appropriateness to allow for the demolition of the building. And that has to be done in writing, and then that has to be submitted to the State Historic and Museum Commission for filing and approval, so.
Does that also include the part, where is it? Demolition be reviewed to seek a viable solution for the location of the park?
So that's going to take us back to subsection three.
Right. I would also.
I'll read it again. "When the board deems a proposed demolition undesirable, it may recommend that the demolition be postponed for a period not to exceed nine months for the consideration of the application by the Borough Council. During this period, so as to render demolition unnecessary, the board and Borough Planning Department shall make all reasonable efforts in identifying alternatives to demolition or resolving problems that resulted in the request for the proposed demolition." So this motion is asking us to deny the application for demolition, but allow this extra time for the applicants who work with the borough to try to find the accommodation.
Mr. Moon, if I may?
Yes, please.
The intent of this was to, if you would, remand this back to Harb for review with all parties. And maybe you don't have to vote on it at all. And you send it back to us, and we will work with Ms. White and the planning office and maybe members from council to see if there are any other viable alternatives. And maybe we can do that within the next month. Because I, oh, excuse me.
Excuse me. Would you, would you also be willing to work with the Steinware Avenue Improvement District, the people?
Oh, if they want to be part of the committee. I think the purpose of this ordinance was to allow for the community to have a dialogue with us in an attempt to find a solution that both meets our statutory requirements and the desire of our business community.
So if we approve this motion as it's written, we would be providing that opportunity for Harb to continue to work with the applicant?
That would be my intention. At the time, the, the use of this motion was obscure.
Yeah.
It was buried in the ordinance. And I even had one of the council, or board members ask me. At the time, he thought we were sending it back to Ms. White just to have this dialogue and not make a recommendation, almost as if we would have tabled her request. I believe it was your request to have the denial to council. I think you wanted to keep the process moving. And so I think that is the intent, was we bring it to your attention first for your deliberation, since you represent all of the community. And so it really is your discretion, to be honest.
So do we have a mechanism to simply table this motion and remand it back to Harb?
Sure.
I, I just want to mention, Matt, that the charters of freedom will not wait. They're, they're going to find someplace else.
I, I, I understand that that's a consideration. But I'm, we're trying to just really make sure that we are not breaking either our local ordinance or state law here, right? Like, that's super important that we don't do that.
But there is a time limit here, is what I'm saying.
I, I understand that. But again, we're only on like week three of this proposal, right? We, we just find out about this, so.
I think what you're saying is nine months is not going to work. I heard nine months.
It said not to exceed nine months.
Not to exceed nine months. That's not going to work.
Yeah. I heard that. But from what I hear from you two, you can come together and collaborate in less, much less than that time.
I see this as a priority for the community. So finding a viable alternative serves us all. I just maybe try to avoid demolishing a building to do it.
Okay.
But I, I think the motion as framed denies at this point the certificate of appropriateness, which is proper, because there, you have a very short timeframe within which to act. Essentially, you have to act at the next meeting, whether that be a special or a general meeting. And guess what? Here we are. So, but there are a number of provisions in your ordinance that allows Harb to have a dialogue with the property owner, the building owner, if you will, to take a look and see whether or not there are any viable solutions. But again, I mean, you know, the project itself is not what's in front of you. It's, it's, the issue in front of you is the demolition of the building.
Right.
And again, land use, property use, that comes under your zoning regulations.
Right.
And I'm sure that this is a viable project under your zoning regulations.
Mr. Whitmore, is there anything in the zone that would prohibit this?
Not to staff's knowledge, no.
Thank you. All right. So once again, I just want to make sure I understand this. A vote in favor of this motion remands this to Harb and gives you time to work with the applicant to see if there isn't a.
Patty's boiling tea.
Okay, cool.
Matt, can I say something? I just.
I want you to, I want you to make your cup of tea. The tea kettle, sorry, sorry about that. I, I have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask it now, Mr. Moon.
Sure. Go for it.
Okay. Let me know when you finish chuckling, and I'll, I'm just putting in the honey and the tea now. Anyway, I'm sorry about that. I, I, I know that we're talking about the ordinance here specifically, and, and the conversation between Mr. Stone and Mr. Eastman and involving the ordinance and, and the state regs. The question that Mr. Moon asked earlier, I, I don't know when we would address this as a council, but very good questions that our president raised earlier, which has to do with, you know, what is this, this parcel of land, you know, in terms of taxes on this property when the, when the house is demolished, if it's demolished? Who's responsible for, if it becomes a park? Who's responsible for that? You know, it's, it's held privately now. So those are some questions that, at some point, we'll be addressing those down the road.
I don't know that we have the ability to address that, right? I mean, it's private property, and were the demolition and the construction both allowed, one by Harb and the other by the zoning, we really wouldn't have boo to say about it. Were it decided by the owner that she wanted to deed it to the borough, then it would be our business. But until that point, I don't think it is ours.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other thoughts? Chris, you have.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knows that I strongly support this project and, and want to see it happen. I look at the balance between historic preservation and, and history, and I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I thank Jackie White for, for putting her heart into this project. But it seems like to me Harb's willing to put this on the top of their priority list and to continue to talk about it. And I know there's time sensitivity to this. Wouldn't want them to back out, because I think this would be around for hundreds of years. And as a history teacher, I just think it's so important for, you know, future generations with the Constitution, the Declaration, the Gettysburg Address. But it does seem like we're hamstrung here with, you know, allowing demolition. So I'd just let you know that I would want to see this happen and would love to see it facilitated to that direction, so hopefully we can make that happen.
Did the, the folks, did they give you a deadline as to when they need to have some sort of concrete decisions?
Not exactly, but I do know that they went to Philadelphia first and got the runaround there and left. So that could happen here, too.
If I may, Mr. Burke, I, I would like to, and you can confirm with me, Mr. Eastman, there is a provision in the ordinance that Harb can, I can't tell you the last time it happened, we can hold a special meeting. And we could accelerate the process so that we can be mindful of the time constraints that are here.
Oh, sure. You can set as many extra meetings as you want.
Absolutely. And I think we could get together so that we could move expeditiously on this, because I think there are viable alternatives that I think can be discussed.
I would support that.
Thank you.
I may interject on the timeline. It's my understanding that the charters of freedom would definitely like to be in Gettysburg to do groundbreaking no later than the anniversary of America 250, so that, that they would like to see this project completed prior to July 2026.
I want to thank you both for coming up and speaking with us here. It's a thorny issue. Ms. White, I, I hope you understand that Harb is not here as your, you know, as a nemesis, as somebody trying to prevent something like this from happening, and I don't think anybody here on council is in that position either. It's just a, this whole thing represents for us a legal question that is hard for us to navigate. So thank you for your patience.
It is, but I just hope you keep in mind these, these people whose businesses are on the line here. That's important.
Again, I would reiterate with counsel that everything that you have done in terms of your zoning, et cetera, is in favor of this project. You've done, you have done nothing to impede the project. You're dealing very specifically with the provisions of your historic district ordinance. And candidly, that's the application that the applicant made and presented to you. Thus, that is really what your, what your call is this evening. The motion as presented, of course, enables you, your, I mean, it does provide for denial of the certificate of appropriateness, which is appropriate at this time, because you are compelled to act on that at your next meeting from, or the meeting following the Harb meeting. So you're essentially duty-bound to do that. Candidly, from my perspective, if you take a look at your ordinance and re-review it, that would be something I would strongly tell you that speed is not always the best thing. We've been taught that the fastest you can get something through is the best way and so forth. And it's very clear that there are a lot of different viewpoints and debate, if you will, with regards to this. And again, I said earlier, I find it very unfair to Harb to, I mean, basically without, if you were to deny or go against what they recommended. I, I think Harb should be given the opportunity to actually examine an application, look at the factors, and give a report, which, again, gives you the best information possible. But they're, they're placed in a position where they have to act on the application there at their meeting.
Right.
So I think there are some considerations that can be looked at. And, and again, this is designed, candidly, I mean, you folks are doing a great job this evening, and you're struggling with some very difficult issues and so forth. But this whole law and everything is designed that the heavy lifting is going to come in front of your Historic Architectural Review Board, not the council.
Right.
So, I mean, essentially, it's designed that you are going to be making ultimate decisions, but the work on the various nuances and criteria has gone to be, has been done ahead of you so that you feel good about relying on the recommendation.
Everybody feel good right now? No.
Again, you've done, what you've done in your zoning allows this project. You've done nothing that would stop this project from going forward from a zoning perspective.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to call a vote here, so I just want to remind counsel, a vote aye in affirmation of this motion will confirm the denial of demolition, but it will remand this issue back to Harb to be worked on with the applicant.
Matt, before we call the vote, can I speak?
Yep.
Real shortly. I think this all, I too, I, I think every one of us appreciate all of the businesses that have, everybody that has come back out to speak, business owners, residents. And while yes, and I've said it before, while, while yes, we're a town based on history, there is so, so much more to Gettysburg, and we all know it in this room, we all know it. And I always want to think about the future generations, and I love thinking outside the box. And I want to see what else can we do for the future generations to come here? What else can we do? The battlefield is not going anywhere. It's always going to be there. The Dobbin House, I hope, never, ever goes anywhere. It's always going to be there. But what else can we do? And this just brings to light that maybe we should really be looking into our ordinance with Harb, our planning, things, those last two, this one and the last motion, May 21st, and we just got reports six days ago, and there's one in there that really shouldn't have been in there on the last one, and that's why I voted against the whole thing. There could be some opportunities here. There's clearly an opportunity here. And it's sad that we are bound, we, the staff, Harb, and the council are bound to an ordinance that is denying this timely, incredible opportunity.
An ordinance, state law and federal law.
Sure. Sure. But it's sad.
Yeah. All right.
I'd like to add, Matt.
Please.
I'm certainly pro-small business, and I want to see Steinware flourish, absolutely.
But it's sad.
Yeah. All right.
I'd like to add, Matt-
Please.
I'm certainly pro-small business, and I want to see Steinware flourish, absolutely. I appreciate everyone coming out and speaking tonight to that effect. I see great historical and educational and economic value in this project. I have some concerns, like anyone else, with demolition, there comes issues with traffic on Steinware, things like that, that would need to be worked out, that I hope wouldn't affect the America 250. And obviously, I've heard and I've received overwhelming support for this, so it is part of our position to enact the will of our residents, and I understand what Mr. Eastman says as far as disconnecting these two and just focusing on the words as written and not the ripple effects that come after, but it's hard to do that, that's-
It is.
It's not easy to do.
And sometimes, when I talk to you about the law-
Yep.
It's what, I mean, basically, that's what a democratic society is based on, and that's also what municipal government is based on, too. So, I mean, it's hard to, I mean, counsel, again, I mean, this was a very, a very important effort to enact this ordinance, and it took a lot of work and so forth, and I'm not suggesting that your charge is not difficult, but specifically, what your analysis is legally is with regards to the application. You can't change the application that was filed with you, and that application was for the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness to allow the demolition of the building. That's what was filed, and that is what you need to deal with. And I agree, sometimes the ripple effect is difficult, but again, I would, I certainly want to reiterate that, again, this project can go forward from a land use standpoint based on your ordinances, and guess what? You're also looking at a new zoning ordinance, you can particularly look at this, that this project could come to fruition based on, because that's a land use question, very much so. It is not, this is a different question.
Sure.
All right. Any other final comments from counsel before we vote? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. I want to thank Mr. Stone and Ms. White for your thoughtful comments tonight. I trust that you will both work together in good faith to see if there's a, an accord to be met. Thank you, everybody. Any other questions for Mrs. English? Thank you, ma'am. All right, that takes us to the parking department.
I did provide my report, and I have the comparisons from last year to this year as normal. Just a couple highlights, we did hire a new part-time parking enforcement officer, Sam Smith, so if you see him on the street, say hi. We are currently doing meter certification, so this requires us to take the insides, the mechanics of the meters out. We generally do a block at a time, and then we time them all with the stopwatches and put them back in. It takes a few hours, so if you see or hear anybody talking about there's no insides to the meter, the displays are missing, it's just temporarily a few hours. And then they get put right back in. I am still working with some businesses on the pay-by-phone coupon options, and I do want to say, I did hear reports that the parking garage did fill at the end, the last Saturday in May. So we were full to capacity. And then, two other things that have come up, just to alert everybody, I know last week, I think it was on the Borough's Facebook page, but there was a text that people were getting and were calling the police department and the parking department about, and it was, looked like it was coming from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the parking department does not text that your fines are due. You would just receive your ticket on the windshield, and if you don't pay that, then a letter from the magistrate. So we do not text. And then most recently, just this past weekend, we did have somebody putting QR codes on the parking garage and a few meters again, so I would just like to reiterate that we do not use any QR codes, and if you do see QR codes anywhere, please report it to the police immediately.
What is the timeframe you use to time the meters?
Like, 12 hour, I mean, are you-
Like, when you're checking the mechanisms against a stopwatch, are you doing it like by the hour, by 15 minutes, by-
Uh, an hour.
My gosh. That does sound time-consuming.
So you set them, we set like 30 meters up on a bench, and every 30 seconds, you put in an hour's worth of time on the meter, and then an hour goes by, and every 30 seconds, they're going to expire, hopefully. So they're all documented with the serial numbers and the pole numbers of meter, it's very time-consuming, and this stopwatch is from the state, and it's, every year has to be certified from the state.
Wow. Cool. Any questions from Ms. Fissell? All right. We do have a motion there, would anybody care to make that?
Sure. A motion to authorize a solicitor to finalize and publish for intended enactment a proposed ordinance for the purpose of designating Hillcrest Place as a residential parking permit street consistent with the Borough regulations for the residential parking permit system as set forth in Chapter 15, Part 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any last-minute questions from Ms. Fissell? All right, thank you, ma'am. That takes us to Public Works.
Good evening. You all should have received my report. I hope you got a chance to look at it over the weekend. Couple highlights on my report. We're going to be doing two agility projects in the next two weeks, one on the week of the 16th, and then one on the week of the 23rd with the surrounding townships. The Garden Club has planted their spring flowers in the square. We did brush collection at the end of May, so brush collection is done now until October. And the Shade Tree Commission planting project has been completed out at the park for this spring. There won't be any more plantings now till fall.
Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? All right, thank you, sir. That'll take us to the engineer, Mr. Claybaum.
Good evening, counsel. It's actually been a very busy month from the engineering world, and I got a six-page report here, I promise I'm not going to read through the entire thing, I'll try to be as efficient as I can because I know we might be a little bit exhausted at this point, but there is some important things in here, so I do want to make sure that you're up to speed with a few of these things. First thing is, I gave you an update on the resource alley parking garage maintenance, I keep that one simple, we're waiting on the materials for, as you know, the steps are the big-ticket item there, and we're waiting for the materials to fix those steps, so just waiting for that. There's an item for Bream Alley channel wall, you heard Matt ask, Mark Geis, I did follow up with him since then, as soon as we hear when that's going to happen, I'll make sure I report that to you. The CDBG curb ramps, so there was one thing there, we're working on the design, the curb ramps on Elm and Alley, name of Elm, Wentz, Wentz Alley. So, as you know, we try to do, every year, we're trying to spend all of your CDBG money and then a little bit more. If we spend under the amount that we get, it's hard to give it back, and then it has to carry on to the following year, and it's an accounting nightmare. So what we do is, we have a base bid number of ramps that we do, and then we put a couple of alternates in. This year, it's 14 base bid and five alternates for a total of 19. The two, and this year, and I work with the planning department and Robbie on picking these ramps, and one of, and we're focusing on alleys, a lot of alleys this year, and one of them is at Wentz Alley, right in front of the seminary, and there's these huge oak trees at this alley, and what we decided is, that's probably one that we ought to withdraw, because in order to be able to make the alleyway ADA compliant, then you need to address these oak trees. And I understand that these things are sensitive to the Shade Tree Committee, they're huge, they're in pretty good shape, and they're significantly damaging the sidewalk there. If you look around, when we talk about sidewalks being damaged by trees, this is maybe the worst one. So to address the curb ramps is a little bit premature without addressing all of the rest of sidewalks, so we think we ought to pull that back. I need to talk to Dina from the county planning office to make sure she's okay with that, but I just wanted to give you an update that we plan on, we're planning on moving forward with, instead of 14 base and five alternates, 14 base and three alternates. Should still spend all your CDBG money and then a little bit. The next item is the channel wall assessment, and there is a motion on your agenda tonight for a flood mitigation grant for the design, and there's two parts of the channel wall that we have deemed as the priorities. Project one is the piece from Gilan Alley to Carlisle Street, and then project two is north of Water Street, so kind of behind Gettysburg Glass. Project one, we've deemed as the priority, but to wait for grant money, the grant money that you had to apply for is for, you can do design or construction, but you can't go for construction until you have the design, it has to be shovel-ready, you've heard of that term before. So at this point, we're just, we don't want to wait for grant money to start the design of the priority one wall between Gilan Alley and Carlisle Street. So the Stormwater Authority earlier tonight did authorize us to move forward with the design of that, they're going to pay for that in-house. Separately from that, we're going to apply for grant money to start the design of the second priority. That's the piece behind Gettysburg Glass. So that's your motion tonight, is to authorize that grant application. It is a bit of a retroactive motion, the grant application was due at the end of last month. So we went ahead, submitted the grant application, should you approve this resolution, backing that up, that, we'll submit that retroactively, the Commonwealth Financing Authority will accept something like that. If you would not approve this motion, we would have to withdraw the application, simply. So I did want to let you know that we are looking to move forward with those two projects. And then also consistently, that while we're moving forward with those, that's when I'll be working with the Borough Solicitor on what you already authorized us to do with the ownership of those walls. Next item is the Welcome Center, we did a review of, I'm sorry, this is with the demo efforts, there was a, what we call Weinbrenner culvert behind the Welcome Center, and one of the things we had to do is identify the location of that culvert. During the demo, we did that. We were able to find that it is in a footing, the footprint of the new Welcome Center building. So the good news is, the piece of that culvert that is, it's two culverts, one big eight-foot culvert, then one small three-foot culvert. The small three-foot culvert is the piece that was in a conflict. We were able to remove that piece. So that one's no longer being used to carry water, only the eight-foot piece of the culvert's being used to carry water. So we were able to identify that last week, that was one of the reasons why we kind of needed to get that part of the project done before we can finalize all of the designs. Now we'll be able to move forward with finalizing some of those designs, like the structural design for the elevator and the lift and those things. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. The Gettysburg Gateway connectivity, of course, at your workshop, you did kind of unanimously give us the direction to move forward with the Boulevard concept. I've gotten together with the design team after your meeting, and we've presented that to PennDOT, we're waiting to see how they want us to move forward, if we had to revise our scoping application, or if we can just deal with that during the design phase. So we're waiting for them to get back to us, and then at your workshop this month, we intend to have a conversation about the square. That was the last piece that we needed to identify from, that came from our public engagement meetings. I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B II project, the, of course, the sewer and water component's done, I'm sorry, the water and storm components are done. We are currently working on the CDBG, that's the second of the three phases, that is going to be done by the end of this month. And then, and that's all of the red concrete, at this point, all of the red concrete has been poured. So we just have a couple of other things. One of the big delays is, there's a pool in, a utility pool that we're having trouble getting removed. It's been in the way, we've been working with the utility companies for over a year now, and it's a frustrating topic, we just aren't really sure what to do about it. So that, we're going to continue to have to push forward with that, that part of it. Aside from that, that project, that part of the project will be done, and then we can focus all of our attention on the third phase, which is the C2P2, that's the DCNR money, and that will include, that will finish the sidewalks up to Constitution and pave the street. That's anticipated to be done sometime in July, it might go into August a little bit. We will be done 100% with that project before school's back in session, college is back in session, mid-August, so that's the update on that. And, oh, last but not least, is I give you an update on the Gettysburg Station, CS Davidson did a review of that, we have several pages of comments on that project, as we anticipated, there's a lot going on there, from traffic impact to landscaping, the planning commission did do a review of it, we are going to be having an in-house meeting with a developer coming up, and that'll continue to be on the planning commission's agenda for several months ahead, so. That is all I have, except for the motion on your agenda, unless you have any questions for me.
I don't. Anybody have any questions for Chad? All right, would anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 060925, requesting a flood mitigation program grant of $57,885 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for a LEV certification and HEC-RAAS analysis for a segment of Stevens Run located north of East Water Street to Fourth Street, and authorizing Charles Gable, MPA, Borough Manager, and Sarah Stahl, Borough Secretary, to execute all documents and agreements between Gettysburg Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Second? All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, thank you. Any last-minute questions for Mr. Claybaum? All right, thank you so much, we're going to move on to the police department. And I am very happy to be able to welcome Sergeant Evans here, and this first motion before us, I want to, we're going to do this before we get to the report, this is ratifying the mayor's delegation of the OIC responsibilities to Sergeant Evans, so I would like to take care of this here first. Would anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm and ratify the mayor's delegation of certain police force supervisory duties to Sergeant Christopher Evans and the performance of the temporary position of Officer in Charge, OIC, of the day-to-day operation and performance of the police officers of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department pending the hiring, employment, and appointment of the Chief of Police.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, we're very happy to have you in this role, Sergeant. All right. So would you care to make the monthly report for the police department? I'm going to put you to work here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So you all should have a copy of Chief Gilling's report. Couple things to highlight, the co-responder, we're not really sure what's happening with her, while Spence is not being very forthcoming, apparently there's some internal personnel issues there, so I don't really have much information. We have been working closely with a co-responder out of Conawago Township, his name is Cal Robertson, he's been helping out with us here lately, he was actually up here earlier today, so he's kind of filling in that role, so he has an open invitation to come out here and help us, and he's been doing so, so he's been doing a great job. The department has a new addition, Cadet Austin Kane, he'll graduate June 23rd up at Harrisburg from the Police Academy, and I believe the mayor and I will be going up there to get him sworn in, so we're looking forward to that, that's exciting. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
So does his field training start as soon as he's sworn in?
Yes, it'll start immediately.
Once he's sworn in, we'll give him a date to start, and then he'll be with Master Patrol Officer Bill Worth.
Fantastic, fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for the Sergeant? You should all have received an email from him today asking for some of your time to sit down, get to know him, and voice your concerns. I hope you will all take advantage of that opportunity. All right.
I would like to highlight one incident that occurred back on May 23rd.
Please.
About 8:00 PM, Officer Hilliard and Officer McDonald were notified by dispatch that somebody had called into Gettysburg Crisis, threatening to, basically threatening to shoot himself in the head with a gun. This subject did not give his name. All he's told the officer, or all he told Crisis was, he had a gun, he was in a truck, and he's in Gettysburg. Acting off that information, all the officer had was a telephone number. They did some excellent investigative work really quickly. Was able to identify the guy's name, the vehicle he was driving, and the vehicle tag number. When they did so, they immediately went out and they canvassed the area, and they located the vehicle. Basically, it was the first parking space on Chambersburg Street, you know, right next to the square. When they located the vehicle, they saw, when they looked inside, they saw a gun in plain view. In the, acting in the interest of public safety, the subject was not there in the vehicle, but acting in the interest of public safety, since there was actually a music festival playing at that time. There was a lot of foot traffic. They towed the vehicle to get it out of the area. They canvassed the area with the help of actually Constable Fitting came down to help. They actually located the subject in the square and actually was able to take him to the hospital and get him to mental health care he needed. So just excellent investigative work by these guys. They quickly eliminated any potential threat to public safety and to the actual subject himself. So just want to highlight that, it was great work by these guys, so.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for the Sergeant? All right, thank you, welcome.
Appreciate it.
I swear they're not always this long. We all look forward to working with you here. All right, that takes us to the Officer, the Manager, and the Treasurer.
You have my electronic report. A couple of things I usually highlight on that. You'll see in the general fund, there's currently $2.8 million. One million of that is always held in a separate account for reserves for an emergency. We are always talking about capital projects. It's one of the highlights that our capital reserve fund still has $2.5 million in it. So the borough does have sufficient funds to take on grant matches and other capital needs as needed and planned. Year-to-date, through April 30th, the borough is, because April is the month we generally receive most of our property tax assessments. We are currently running a $1 million surplus, of course. That will even out, as some of our larger expenses are usually at the end of the year when we finance things like pension contributions and service debt, those types of things. Also, I just wanted to highlight America 250, as we're now almost a year out from that commemoration. I would say that the big exciting thing actually will happen at the end of the year, in November, with the recreation of the Gettysburg Address. That project continues to move in a very favorable direction. I don't want to get ahead of Ms. Allen on that. But there's some very exciting developments on that within the last couple of weeks, which hopefully we'll be hearing more about from her in not the distant future. Our friends at Patriot Rail are going to be in town again this week, actually, to update staff on where they are in the development of their excursion train trip. And they are planning on having that open by August. That's their target. Later this week, staff will be meeting with Senator McCormick's staff, who will be in town. We are still waiting on the the word on our build grant application. And so part of the message there later this week with Senator McCormick's staff is we need that political advocacy in Washington DC to have a favorable outcome to that application. That would be a game changer, obviously, if everyone remembers. That's the grant that would fund the construction of what council's currently working on with the design of the Baltimore Street corridor. With that, that concludes my report. Be happy to entertain questions before you get into your motions.
Any questions for the Manager? All right, would anybody care to make his first motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, excuse me. To approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. A COLA increase.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Larry E. Weichert to be paid from the police pension plan effective May 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. CDBG.
I'll make a motion authorizing the Borough of Gettysburg to enter into a cooperation agreement with the County of Adams for the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant. CDBG Program Administration, Rita C. Freeling, Gettysburg Borough Mayor, Jay Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gable, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to execute the cooperation agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And the last motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough of Gettysburg to enter into an agreement with Aspirant Consulting Group for the purposes of consulting and providing strategy, support, and related services in connection with the navigation and coordination of the transition search and hiring processes related to filling of the borough's vacant managerial position of Chief of Police. Charles R. Gable, MPA, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are authorized to execute all documents and agreements between the Gettysburg Borough and Aspirant Consulting Group on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion carries. We're now into liaison reports, and we'll start with Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be quick, so, but I do have a few announcements. So America 250 PA, so June 24th, if anybody is not doing anything, we're going to be in Racehorse Alley, doing an event called Road to Revolution at 11:00 AM. So the America 250 PA Adams County Steering Committee is putting this together. So that is going to be the kickoff for Adams County, our 250th launch. And that is the date that the first troops from Adams County went to York to join revolutionary forces. So I must give a big shout out to Mr. Mark Geddes, who paid $740 out of his own pocket to restore the plaque in Racehorse Alley to its pristine condition, so we can rededicate that space. So please join us that day.
That'd be the portion by the parking garage?
The one by the parking garage. That doesn't sound as glamorous when I say it that way.
There's so much Racehorse Alley, I just want to know.
Very good. National PA Day, so in July, the 18th and 19th of July, America 250 PA granted our Adams County organization a mini-grant to do a community project. So we're going to be working in Alumni Park. We're going to be painting the fence, cleaning the flower beds. We're also going to be putting in two new steel benches dedicated to two alums there that have served the Alumni Committee for quite a long time. So we're going to be calling for volunteers, and I will let you know how to sign up for that. I don't think we need a big crew, because it's not a big space. But we're really excited about what, getting that space ready for next year and for our residents, who obviously use it an awful lot. Our annual appeal mailing went out this last week. So thanks to Sarah and Wendy for managing the postcard mailing. About 1,600 of them went out. So our thanks to the borough for supporting Main Street Gettysburg as generously as you do. But we also make an appeal to the public, because in order to balance our operational budget, we certainly need donations from the community. And the community's been very generous to us, so thank you. So charters of freedom, I'll just say real quick, we're going to certainly work with Ms. White with the Steinware bid like we do, and with Harb. I think it's a tremendous project, as I indicated to you before. For economic reasons, I think it's a great investment. I won't go on about that, but I definitely am going to keep that door open. And I hope they'll invite me to the table to see how we can resolve that opportunity to the benefit of the community, the business community as well. So update on the Gettysburg Welcome Center. So some big things happened in the last week. So first, in order to get us to last week, all the admin requirements were completed for the congressional grant. So that was no small hurdle, but it got done. My thanks to the Borough Manager for going through all the portals and hoops that we had to jump through to make that happen. We sent that package to Harb, so that they would realize that we had met the funding conditions in order to proceed with demolition. And we will go back to Harb next month with the final plans that will talk about, you know, bricks and windows and doors and all the things to make sure that they understand how we're moving forward, including things like the lift, like Chad mentioned. So my thanks to Harb and to Brandon for getting us this far. I realize this is a delicate subject, but this particular project's been going on for many years. And I think its service to the greater good is going to be tremendous to the business community, as well as our visitors and our residents. And I think the charters of Freedom Park will do something similar. But I do think we have, there are more questions to be asked. And that's why I'm hopeful that I can have a seat at that table to resolve those and figure out a way that we can smartly move forward. Electrical was relocated before demolition started. My thanks to the Hoffman Trust for the grant that enabled that. And C.E. Williams executed the demolition. I cannot say enough about their careful and efficient work. We did save the cast-iron window grates, Brandon, and the rocks from the foundation. Not all of them, not all of them, but those will be salvaged for reuse. Those were the two items that were indicated by Harb, that if we could save them, that we should do so, and we did. Our thanks to the neighbors for their support and cooperation. The cost of the demolition, just so you know, will not come out of the grant. It will come out of Main Street, Gettysburg fundraising restricted funds. So that was a separate endeavor, and I'm very thankful for that fundraising that has gone over the last several years to allow us to do that separate from the congressional construction funds. So the bid will go out after we go back to Harb, and we anticipate construction starting in the fall, so fingers crossed. And last thing, real quick. Main Street Gettysburg, we're working on an application for designation to the state. This is a status that we've held before. And part of that process is creating a strategic plan. Mr. Carr mentioned about preparing Gettysburg for the future. Main Street Gettysburg is charged with strategic planning as we look to figure out, you know, how do we leave this place better than we found it? I think it's really vital for us to look at the future stewards of this place. Who are we going to be passing on for business owners, for the residents that are going to live here, the volunteers that are going to clean up the streets on Monday mornings, or whatever is going to happen to make this place continue to be vibrant and welcoming. So part of that requirement for designation application is to hold public meetings to discuss that strategic plan. So the public will be invited to those meetings. I look forward to hearing ideas, like we heard at the Baltimore Street planning meetings. Some really good things came out of those discussions. You know, it's always good to have, you know, two heads are better than one kind of thing. And I'm just encouraging people to watch for those notifications, and please come and participate. So if you have questions, I'll answer.
Any questions for Ms. Sellers? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gara, Mr. Carr.
Just a reminder that we have, excuse me. Just a reminder that we have the Adams County Farmers Market at the Rec Park every Saturday, 8:00 to 1:00. And I know it's a little bit of ways, but it's coming real quick. July 4th to Gettysburg 4th, come to the Gettysburg Rec Park for the annual 4th of July celebration. There will be about 20 onsite food and drink vendors. There will be live music. There will be fireworks sponsored by Destination Gettysburg, again, July 4th at the Rec Park.
All right, thank you. GMA, Mr. Berger.
I was not able to attend that meeting, so I have no report.
Mrs. Butterfield could not be with us. Akba, Mayor Freeling.
Next meeting is in August, so nothing to report.
Anything from Hatby, Ms. Lawson?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Thank you. And anything from the trail feasibility study, Chris?
Nope.
All right, thank you. We've got reports in our folders. Let's move on to elected officials' comments. Anybody?
I'm meeting with the Juneteenth Committee tomorrow for final preparations for the Juneteenth celebration. It'll be June 21st at the Seminary and June 22nd at the theater, at the Majestic. So we're going to be putting final touches on that tomorrow. And also, I've been invited to Juneteenth Freedom Day recognition in Harrisburg with Governor Shapiro.
Great.
So I'll be representing Gettysburg there. And, oh, I'll be going to the Mayor's Conference in July.
Great.
It's in Hershey. That's all I have.
All right, any other elected officials?
I just, excuse me, I just wish to thank the Public Works, Public Works and the Police Department for their assistance in the recent holiday Memorial Day weekend. But also, the Ninth Annual Gettysburg Pride Fest was a success. And thank you to those two departments.
All right. Anyone else? All right, that takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not reserved for topics on the agenda. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podiums. Date your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment?
Wow, I'm really impressed. Thank you all for serving. This is my first full board meeting to witness, so thank you all. I am representing Evergreen Cemetery now. I happen to be informed with an article in the newspaper about the corridor or the median that goes Baltimore Street. In my years of being at Evergreen, my main concerns are helping people find lots for their family members and their loved ones, and to help them through the process. I get to deal with a historical cemetery with a lot of visitors, tourists. And I also, most important, well, not most importantly, but the thing that I deal with, with battlefield guides, tour buses, and groups, that I tell people that I have to be the most concerned about out front is safety. And I'm asking a question, not to be, of course, when I saw the picture in the paper, warning signs went up to me. I've lived there pretty much since I was 13 years old, at the top of Baltimore Pike. I'm well aware of patterns of what people do that's dangerous. And I'm asking the council, I, as a representative of the cemetery, and with that years, those many years of experience of trying to keep the entrance way to Evergreen safe. That include my concept of closing it down to vehicular traffic twice, but the board voted to keep it open. And I'm glad we have a board that makes those decisions that's not mine, even though I feel strongly that it's a very dangerous entrance. So my question to the board is, what do you recommend me to do or to state our position as a cemetery about your plans for a median down Baltimore Street? I have various concerns about what its impact could be. I'm not saying that it's a bad thing, but there are big warning signs when I see a median that's coming right up to our entrance with funeral processions, going out of the gatehouse. Safety, you know. I'm just asking, when would be the right process for me to possibly offer opinions, insights, experience of living at that place? Because I have to say, the tour center is the tour- Because I have to say, the tour center is the tour center. The National Cemetery gatehouse is the National Cemetery gatehouse, but we are an acting cemetery that is at the top of the hill. And I'm well aware, I, I could see by it that I think you're trying to make it a safer entrance into town and a safer exit, but we are possibly the most impacted by this. And I just would ask, what would you recommend me as a representative of the cemetery, the best time for me to make full comment? Because you've been here long enough, I, I don't want to do that now.
So, typically during public comment, we would not respond, you know, this isn't like a discussion or debate, but I feel like it's important to give you some guidance here. I would send an email to Mr. Gable and he'll get it to all the parties that are involved. And I would do that soon as we are in the design phase. And if there are considerations that need to be taken into account by the engineers, this is in fact the time to start getting those things out there.
Okay. Thank you.
We did have a series of public meetings where we sought as much input as possible. I'm sorry, we weren't able to get that information out to you in a timely manner, but, you know, those, those ideas were sort of workshopped by the entire community, not just representatives of the borough, but it, this is a severe concern that you're bringing up that maybe we hadn't considered. So, yeah, please send your-
Send an email.
Send your concerns to Manager Gable and he'll disseminate it from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd also add that two weeks from tonight, council will be talking about this at their works, work session.
Okay.
Design elements of, of that corridor.
Okay.
So, feel free to join the council at that meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your service.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Dave Peters, 13 Lincoln Square. Just two real quick things because you have done a lot of hard work tonight. I think the charters of freedom plan or concept is wonderful. And here, I'm really throwing out something outside the box. I think the borough needs to find someplace for that charter and seeing where the borough's going with the concepts on the circle, the square, what a great place to put it. But that may or may not work, but keep that in the back of your mind. The other thing, I'm just really curious. Lately, we've all had to deal with perceptions about the DHS Sanctuary City finding, and I would love to hear the status. What is the borough doing to try to find out, is this a mistake? What does the implication mean? How can we correct it? Everything I've heard in the meetings we attended, I agree, we are in a sanctuary city. You've made that clear in your guidelines and laws. I know you usually don't respond, but I think the community would love to hear where we are with this. The importance of this goes well beyond just worrying about it, but it also has big financial implications to many projects that the borough is in progress. So, I'd love to hear some feedback on that for the community.
I don't know that I have a response beyond the statement we've already made. As far as we know, we are fully compliant with all federal law that has been duly enacted. We have never declared ourselves a sanctuary city, but different entities have different definitions of what that means. I don't know what else to say about that at this time. Sorry. Is there any other public comment? All right, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody.